And welcome, everyone. I'll just give a few announcements before we dive into our four items that are on the agenda for tonight's public hearing. And at this point, we have no registered speakers for any of the four items, nor have we had any correspondence, recent correspondence on these four items. So this may go very quickly this evening, but if there are people here to speak, they will certainly have that opportunity. And I'll just go through the key points on that front. Speakers have five minutes to address council, make their comments, and should keep their comments focused on the merits of the report being considered by council. We ask that speakers state whether they support or are opposed to the recommendations. Speakers may speak once, and additional comments can be submitted in writing to mayor and council at vancouver.ca or handed to the clerk on paper. And those speaking on behalf of three or more people or three or more organizations get three extra minutes to speak. We just ask that the, those who are being represented identify themselves and are not speakers themselves. Finally, if we do not hear from, not conclude hearing from everyone this evening, we'll recess and reconvene Tuesday, November the 17th. That's the backup time for this public hearing, 6:00 PM in council chamber. And with that, we'll dive into item number one, heritage designation for 1102 Commercial Drive of the Florida Market. Madam Clerk, may, well, can you please read the application and summary of correspondence received?
Yes, this is an application by Cornerstone Architecture to designate, designate as protected heritage property the exterior of the Florida Market Building at 1102 Commercial Drive, which is listed on the Vancouver Heritage Register in the B evaluation category. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval, and council has received no correspondence on this application since it was scheduled for public hearing.
Thank you. And we have James Bolt here, who's our heritage planner, Urban Design Division, to present the application and noting that we don't have any speakers, so I will suggest we waive the presentation. Okay, thank you. So we will, I'll just ask, we can have questions to staff, but I'll ask if the applicants, Scott Kennedy of Cornerstone Architecture, wants to speak to the application?
I'll answer questions if they come forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from council to staff or the applicant team, applicants here? No questions, so we'll go straight to hearing from anyone, the members of the public who are here to speak on this item, item number one. Are there any speakers here for item number one? I'll call three times. Are there any speakers here for item number one? Last call, any speakers here for item number one? Seeing none, and as there are no speakers, we'll close the speakers list. And as we've had no public comments received on this item since 5:00 PM today, we'll, we'll close, receipt of public comments, move on hearing any closing comments and decision. Any closing comments from staff?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any closing comments from applicants? No, none needed. Any final questions from council?
I have a question, I was ready to move the recommendation, make a brief comment. Move the recommendations and just say, this is a beautiful building that's quite iconic and a great location, and I applaud the applicant and our team for finding a creative way to protect that building.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Deal. I need a seconder for that. Counselor Carr will second. Any more speakers to the motion moving the recommendations? Okay, we'll go to the vote on this. Item number one. Sounds like it's next door in the councilors. So everyone can vote on this. We're missing Counselor Ball, are you? Okay, we have nine votes, all in favor, unanimous support. Thank you to the applicants and to staff for the work on this, and congratulations and good luck on next steps. Good to see that go through without, without any trouble there. And we're on to our next piece, the second item tonight is the rezoning for 7638 to 7664 Camby Street. Madam Clerk, can you please read the application and summary of correspondence received?
Yes, this is an application by GBL Architects Incorporated to rezone 7638 to 7664 Camby Street from RT1 to Family Dwelling District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story residential building containing 34 dwelling units, a height of 21.3 meters and a floor space ratio of 2.40 are proposed. The general manager of urban, of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. And council has received two pieces of correspondence in opposition to this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we've sent Thea Lau here, our planner from Vancouver South Division, to present the application. And again, with no registered speakers, I'll suggest we waive the presentation. Okay, you're good with that. We, I'll ask the applicant, Andrew Emerson, GBL Architects, wants to speak to the application? Any questions from council for staff or the applicants before we call the speakers? Counselor Ball, yes?
Yes, I just, again, because it is suitable for family housing, I would like to just be assured regarding the play area that is assigned for the family housing, how big it is, what will be there, if it's possible to give me that information. It does say that it will comply, but what does that mean? Because sometimes there isn't anything there, so I'd just like to know.
Is Lau, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, applicant, I'll answer the question.
Okay.
Back area of the courtyard has actually been, I guess, created in a more natural playscape for the children, which is increasingly more common whereby we don't have, what's a more prescriptive prefabricated children's play area. In this case, we're using a series of changes in level, changes in texture, changes in kind of playscape that makes it a little bit more interactive rather than having just a small play space, if you will. So, and the absence of any lane houses in this project allows for quite a long linear space along the back, which will be appropriately screened and secured from the lane. So that's really what we're intending, and there was a series of water features, a series of, as I said, tiering with the actual different levels, allowing for a more natural play area for the children.
Will there be anything for children to be able to do in this space, given that it's a relatively small, small space? I do understand that, yes, they could run up and down, given, given, but is there, you know, on Yukon, there's a very small area there that's a place, play space that has some equipment that is fun for kids, that they can climb on or whatever. And I'm just wondering, are you planning this to be a play area, or is it something that is used by adults and children and isn't really defined as a play space?
I mean, we can certainly introduce some actual prescriptive play space area. I mean, it's similar to the, if you're familiar with the, the Hinge Park in the Olympic Village, there's a series of tiered boulders and stones, and you see kids kind of playing on it, playing over it, kind of, as opposed to actually having a straightforward kind of slide and swing set. But we can certainly work with our landscape architect to ensure that there is an appropriate amount of, I guess, landscape features or prescribed features that will, will be interactive with the kids, for sure.
Thank you very much, thank you for your help.
Okay, no more questions from council, so we will go to speakers. Are there any speakers here for item number two? Are there any speakers here for item number two, the rezoning on Camby Street, 7600 block? Are there any speakers, last call for item number two? Seeing none, we will close the speakers list, and as we've had no public comments since 5:00 PM, we'll close receipt of public comments, and we'll move to final comments from staff. Any final comments?
No further comments.
Okay, any final comments from our applicant? No, any final questions? Counselor Ball, do you have questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Although we have the generalized, it's going to fit into the guidelines, we still do not have new guidelines. And my concern is that every time we get a building come up, especially on a very busy street like Camby, and for little children who live in the apartment, we keep saying, oh, well, there'll be some rocks. And I am worried that we're not actually fulfilling what the vision of putting play areas in apartments are. So if you could give me some idea whether staff is going to look at this again and perhaps be more aware of the needs of small children that are in a confined space, I would be really happy to hear that.
Sure. Staff will be looking at the project through further design development during the development permit stage, and oftentimes those types of details are further evaluated at that stage. Staff are also working on our family room policy, and a lot of our high-density family for children guidelines are being reviewed, and staff are looking to accommodate and have better opportunities as families are living in more high-dense areas.
Thank you. I will look forward to receiving those as soon as possible, and I really do hope that when we're on these very public streets like Camby and all the arterials, that we're actually looking more seriously at these confined spaces that will have small children in them. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Ball. Are you willing to move this? Are you, we need a mover for next steps? Someone wish to move?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Sorry, Counselor Louis, did you want to speak to that, or you?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay, anyone else want to speak to the motion moving the recommendations? Okay, we'll go to vote on item number two. Waiting for Deal and Reimer. Okay, oh, now you're not. There we go, okay. So we have 10 votes, all in favor of the recommendations. So we have approved item number two. Thanks to applicants and staff for all your hard work on it, and, and all the best with your next steps. And we are on to item number three, which is rezoning for 454 West Pender Street. Madam Clerk, can you please read the application, the summary of correspondence received?
This is an application by Oni Development Pender Corporation to rezone 454 West Pender Street from Downtown District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to increase the floor space ratio from 6.0 to 8.56 to allow for the construction of an 11-story mixed-use building with a height of 32 meters and commercial at-grade and residential units above, all of which will be secured by Section 219 covenant as market rental housing. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Council has received two pieces of correspondence in opposition to this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have Linda Gillan here, our planner from Vancouver Downtown Division, to present the application. And again, with no registered speakers, I'll suggest we waive the application or the presentation.
There were some, some questions from council at the time of referral, so I would be happy to give a brief presentation.
Let's start with that.
In response to those questions. So, good evening, Mayor Robertson and councilors, I'm Linda Gillan, the rezoning planner for the application. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow for an 11-story mixed-use building with ground floor commercial and secured market rental housing above. The application is being considered under the downtown east side plan and accompanying rezoning policy. The site is currently zoned downtown district and is part of the Victory Square area of the downtown east side. There were two questions from council at the time of referral, and I'll provide an overview of the policy for this area in response to those questions. The first question was about the relationship between the different layers of policy in this area, specifically in relation to height. The Victory Square policy plan and guidelines allow for market developments through rezoning or through heritage revitalization agreements with densities above 5 FSR and heights above 70 feet on a case-by-case basis. The guidelines note that the maximum height should not be more than 100 feet. In 2010, the historic area height review concluded that a height of up to 100 feet was appropriate for this area. And in 2014, council approved the downtown east side plan, which provided additional direction on height in this area. The plan notes that heights of up to 105 feet may be considered through development permit if the project includes social housing or market rental housing, and this is also the same maximum height that can be considered through rezoning. At referral, council had asked about the difference between the maximum height in the Victory Square guidelines and in the downtown east side plan. When considering a rezoning application in the Victory Square area, staff would consider the most recent direction from council in their review. The maximum height for a market rental project in this area and on this site, whether under zoning or through rezoning, would be 105 feet. The site is located at the corner of Pender and Richards Streets, and surrounding development includes mixed-use residential, commercial, and office buildings ranging from 1 to 30 stories in height. The applicant for the subject site has also submitted a rezoning application for 424 to 428 West Pender Street, which is labeled as the companion site on the site. The proposal for the companion site is scheduled as item four on tonight's public hearing agenda. The downtown east side plan requires market housing to provide at least 25% family units, and in this case, the applicant is proposing to meet the family housing requirement over the two sites, over the two sites, with a higher proportion of family units proposed for the subject site at 454 West Pender Street. At referral, a question was asked about council's authority to consider meeting the family housing requirement over two sites rather than one. Through the Vancouver Charter, council has the authority to approve a rezoning application at a public hearing, along with attaching conditions of approval to that approval of the rezoning. In this case, staff are recommending an alternate approach to achieve the intended policy outcome of providing family housing in this part of Victory Square. Due to its location at the corner of the block, the subject site has the potential to provide better daylight and better cross-ventilation for the proposed family units. In summary, staff conclude that this application is consistent with the rezoning policy for the area and recommend that the application be approved, subject to the conditions outlined in the agenda package. Staff and members of the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions for staff? Counselor Carr?
Yes, thanks. Sorry, it took a bit to just switch from the public screen. Thank you for answering those questions, I really appreciate it. And to learn that it's the most recent policy guidelines that determine the appropriate height that, that you would work with. It still is slightly over, it's a little bit over the 105 of maximum feet under the downtown east side plan, 105.3, I think, if I, my memory is correct. I just hate it when a little extra is squeezed out. Why can't it just be at least equal to the maximum? But I'm really, I like your explanation of why we would be excluding the elevator protrusions at the top, because I think with the elevator, it's 118 feet.
And just to touch on your point about the height of 105.3, we do have a design development condition, and the height in the bylaw is, is also at 105.
Ah, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So the 118, the elevator?
Well, that's, section 10.11 of the zoning and development bylaw allows for exclusion of certain elements from the calculation of height anywhere in the city, so that's not something that's specific to this particular site or this particular area of the downtown east side. And there are certain conditions under which over high elements can be excluded. Access to urban agriculture is one of them, so that's what this applicant is proposing to do.
Great, okay, yes, I noticed that it's a green roof, so, great, okay, thank you for that information. So I'd like to switch to the other question I asked, which is around the companion site and the fact that the 25% family housing is being achieved over two, the two sites. Is there any other precedent for this?
Not, not that I'm aware of in this particular area. In this case, we are recommending this because we believe that it will be a better outcome in terms of the quality of the family units. So the applicant had proposed to provide a higher proportion on the corner site, and, and staff believe that that will achieve the intended policy objective of providing good quality family housing in this area.
I understand, and your explanation around the quality of access to light, air, et cetera, makes sense. However, I have concerns, so I'm looking for reassurance around the fact that this doesn't set a precedent where although this is the same developer on two sites, and they're very close to each other, where it might be that a developer comes to us and then says, well, there's another development over there in that other area, and I'd like to put all of my family housing or all of, they're going to do a whole bunch of family housing, and there's a trade-off, or, you know, I'm very worried about this, like a slippery slope of where you say no, and under what circumstances you say no, and what are, under what circumstances you say yes to the companion site notion.
So in this case, it's obviously the, a situation where the two sites are within the same block and also on, on the same south side of the block, so they are very close, as you noted, and we would be achieving, if, if council were to support staff's recommendation, the same number of family units within this, this block.
So the criteria are, it has to be within the same block, on the same side of the street, by the same developers, are these the criteria?
I think that proximity is something that staff would look very, very closely at if something like this were to be proposed again. I obviously can't speak to any hypothetical future scenarios.
Yep, those are the, the things I'm worried about, though, those hypothetical futures. Okay, that, thank you very much for answering my questions.
Okay, Counselor Louis, questions?
Just a couple of questions around the notification. There is, if I read this correctly, in February 2016, or about there, thereabouts in the dates, and in conjunction with the March 7th, 2016, there were a total of 8,212 notifications distributed, and then, once again, after there was a redesign, a further open house was held, I think, is that correct? And then?
There was a single open house, but we did two separate rounds of notification.
And then the second time, 8,700, so an increase of 500. How was it that we had an extra 500 between the first notification and the second notification?
That could be a result of a number of factors. One would be something like a, a new strata development, perhaps getting its occupancy permit and being occupied during that time, and therefore there are additional property owners to notify. The other factor would be that we use Canada Post unaddressed ad mail, so you're capturing all of the delivery paths that Canada Post uses, and sometimes the geography of those may change, so we say, we see perhaps additional postcards being delivered within the same notification area.
Okay. Because the number of individuals remains stable, 432, and the number of neighborhood groups and organizations stays stable at 23.
And those are both, that's the downtown east side listserv, so those notifications would reflect the number of people that are on that mailing list.
All right. Thanks, I just wanted to know why there is a difference of so many, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Megs, questions for staff?
Just one, it's more of a high-level one, but does the presence of these two projects suggest that this plan is delivering what we hope for in terms of interest in rental construction, and can we anticipate more buildings of this type?
The, well, the, the plan does support the provision of social housing and market rental, as well as some market housing in this area, so it's obviously fairly new, was adopted in 2014, but the policy certainly would support more, more projects like that in this area.
And are you seeing any interest in that, or is it too early to say?
Possibly a bit early to say.
Okay, thanks, that's all.
Counselor Louis, you're?
No further questions, but I'm prepared to move the recommendations.
We still have to hear from speakers. So we got into questions there, actually premature, Counselor Reimer, do you have Okay, we, I didn't give the applicants an opportunity to make any opening comments. Did you have any? You wish to make? Okay, so we've been through our round of questions, and they were all for staff. Are there any questions for the applicants before we call speakers? Okay, I'll call, we'll move to speakers, and I'll call three times. Are there any speakers here for this item, item number three? Are there any speakers here for item number three, the rezoning 454 West Pender Street?
Hi, sorry.
Okay, just step up to the podium, please, and you could give us your name for the public record, please.
Hi, my name is Eric, Eric Yang. I just have a quick question regarding to the building design. The plan encourages micro-units, I believe, for the area. So with the two separate small developments, so for the rest of the smaller lots on the block, as they will have no windows on the side of the building, and it is obviously a very deep lot, 120 square foot deep, does that mean, does that suggest that perhaps for the similar developments in this region, the small developments, that the units will have difficulty in achieving the micro-units or, or getting enough window spaces and sunlight into the rooms? That is my question.
Yeah, what, all we can do is, we can pose that question to staff when it comes back around.
Okay.
For council.
Okay.
To ask those questions, but.
Okay.
You're clearly pointing out a concern that you have going forward, so that's much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did we get your name for the, for the record?
Eric, Eric Yang, Eric?
Last one.
Yang, Y, Y N G. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And are there any other speakers for item number three? Last call, okay. We will then close our speakers list, and again, as we've had no public comments since 5:00 PM, close the receipt of public comments, move to any closing comments from staff. Any closing comments from staff?
No, no closing comments.
Okay, any closing comments from the applicants? None, okay. Questions for council, final questions for staff or applicants? Counselor Louis?
With your indulgence, Mr. Chair, although it's not directly related to this specific development, the question that was posed is, is related to development in general for the area, maybe staff could just briefly answer that question, you know, as it is related to this development.
Through the chairs, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Timothy Potter, development planner for the project. Very briefly, just answering that question, developments of a sort of a narrow and fairly deep lot dimension will require special consideration in terms of maintaining livability. Like this project, there are possibilities to achieve that in terms of light well usage and this kind of thing, so it's more than likely any future sites of the like would, would use those kinds of tools and design attributes to maintain some level of, of daylighting for, for bedrooms and various units. That's how we would look at it.
Thank you. Close your my questions?
Any other questions? Seeing none, Counselor Louis, do you want to move a motion?
I'm prepared to support the staff's recommendations for this development proposal. Just briefing, briefly speaking to the proposal itself, thank you to staff for the exact action. Just briefly speaking to the proposal itself, thank you to staff for the exact explanations on why there were slight variances from what it says in the plan. I think overall, this development does strike the balance in meeting the needs of redevelopment and the plan itself, and certainly the additional rental housing in the area is very important, particularly the issue of the extra bedrooms. The two-bedroom units are important, I think, for overall livability and mix of our city, so happy to support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Councillor Louis. To the motion, a second or for that first? Councillor Reimer will second, and you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor Robertson. I have to admit, it's a bit challenging to speak to this building without speaking to the next one, so I think what I will just simply say is that I support this one and save my comments till after we've heard the next one completely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Carr?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. First of all, may I thank staff for answering the questions and really responding to some of my concerns that I have around this, and I just want to reiterate those. I will be supporting this project, but I want to be very clear, moving forward, that this idea of companion developments that together achieve some of our policy goals is a slippery slope I do not want to see us go down, and the reason being that, you know, that if we really followed our rules strictly, we'd have 25% minimum family housing on both sites. And so, we are taking at this point a loss in the achievement of that goal around delivery of family housing in our city, so I think we have to be very careful about that. I hope that this is a very unique, and, yeah, very unique situation. And I do appreciate staff also, in their conditions of approval, holding to the height limit. That's important to me, even .3 of a feet is still in excess of what the height limits are stated in our plans. And I also appreciate the answers around how we would achieve, in general, making sure quality of life considerations, access to sun, to light, to air, are maintained within all buildings, especially ones with family, but all buildings in the city. So, as I say, I will be supporting this with those caveats in terms of future decisions.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Carr, and that's all I have on the speakers' queue for this item, so we will go to the vote on this item. We've got all 10 votes in favour, unanimous support for item number three. So, first, congratulations to the applicants, and thanks to them and staff for the work on this. And we've completed item number three, and we are on to item number four, which is connected in some sense, several senses. So, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to read the application summary of correspondence received for 424 to 428 West Pender Street.
This is an application by Oni Development Pender Corporation to rezone 424 to 428 West Pender Street from downtown district to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to increase the floor space ratio from 6.0 to 8.14 to allow for the construction of an 11-story mixed-use building with a height of 32 metres and commercial at-grade and residential units above, all of which will be secured by a section 219 covenant as market rental housing. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. And council has received two pieces of correspondence in opposition to this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, Lynda Gillan's here, our planner from downtown division, to present the application, which is obviously related to the prior item.
I would be happy to with my presentation, and staff and the applicant team are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Did the applicants want to make any opening comments before questions? We're okay. So, any questions from council for staff or the applicants on item number four? No questions, so we'll go right to hearing for many speakers on this item. Are there any speakers here for item number four, our final item tonight? Are there any speakers here for item number four? Last call, speakers for number four. Seeing none, we will close the speakers' list, and again, as we've had no public comments since 5:00 PM, we'll close public comment period, and we'll move on to any closing comments from staff?
No closing comments, thank you.
Okay, any closing comments from applicants? None there, and any final questions from council? Councillor Louis?
No questions, so ready to move a motion when you're ready.
Yep, there are no other questions, so go ahead.
I'm prepared to support the staff recommendations, but I do have some comments in regards to the proposal in conjunction with the other development proposal. Obviously, they're linked in order to achieve one of the policy goals of the city. You know, normally, I would say that we'd like to be able to achieve these policy goals as standalone individual applications. These are in close proximity, of course, and brought to us together as proposals. I'm prepared to support it, but I would also say that, you know, the preference would be to have them separate whenever possible, but understanding that we are in a crisis situation is probably how to best describe it, with our vacancy rates as low as they are for rental housing, with the advent that we have limited family housing, and we are in fact achieving our policy goals over the course of these two developments, that I think it is supportable. It is innovative, I think, you know, in some of the other instances where we look to have a combination of opportunities as a result of having the flexibility, looking over a number of sites, I think that, although more complicated, does provide us some flexibility to achieve things. I think in the end, having additional units in closer proximity to each other for families might be actually beneficial to some of the families themselves that we locate within the other structure, and so it's, could in fact be something that is better off in the long run. But, having said all that, to decomplicate these types of situations where we are actually having two separate conversations about two separate public hearing initiatives, that the preference, I think, would be to have standalones whenever possible.
Thank you, Councillor Louis. Councillor Reimer, do you want to second that?
I'll second it. I am in support of this building. I did want to speak to the issue of the two buildings, which is, I always felt challenged to do that before we were at the second one. I don't, I wanted to put on record that I do not view this as a slippery slope or any of that language. I think it's actually, I mean, I think it's a contextual thing, and project by project, one has to look at it, but I think in this case, staff and the applicant have done, I mean, maybe brilliant is overused, like very unique sometimes is, but I think it's quite a brilliant response to a very challenging set of requirements under the plan in terms of urban design and retail scape and trying to get family housing and other sorts of housing in the area. I feel that had we had done this in 140-unit complex, we would have, we would have lost design, and we would have lost something, and yet, because of the way it was done, staff working with the applicant and urban design panel input and all of the pieces that have led to this moment, allowed for achieving pretty much every checkmark in the plan that was hoped for, for this sub-area. So, I think I'm quite, well, I know I'm quite happy to support it, and I think if something came forward in the future like this, I would feel equally positive about it, but understanding that each block is different. The only thing that I worry about with this combination is the building in the middle and the impacts on them. I'm sure they have some concerns of their own about that, having construction on either side of them, but if I have that concern, they have that concern, I'm sure this has been thought through and that there is a construction and good neighbour plan in place that will help mitigate impacts on them.
Thank you. Councillor Carr?
Yes, thank you. I just, I will only reiterate my concern that I raised in the last item that we considered at this public hearing, and that is, I think that when we have requirements around things like inclusionary zoning or family zoning, a family housing zoning, that they're meant to apply to every proposal that comes forward to us. And so, I really feel apprehensive around the fact that this may end up being not just a one-time unique situation, but something that is brought forward more frequently, in which case I will, if it's brought forward at all, again, I think I would have very grave concerns, and I want to know some very, very, very stringent guidelines under which we would accept the suggestion of any kind of companion sharing of responsibility around meeting the guidelines that we have set for quality of life and to meet the needs of the kind of people that want to live in our city and that we need to provide housing for in our city, and that we know is to include more family housing. So, based on that, I know I will support this, but I am, as I say, doing it with some trepidation.
Okay, and it's back to you, Councillor Louis.
Just a final comment, Mr. Mayor. Just to be clear, there's no loss of family units as a result of the splitting of the requirement between these two sites. In fact, there's an additional unit that's being provided over and above the 25% that's required for these particular applications in combination, so there is no loss in that we are not voting for a situation where it does not achieve our policy goals over the two particular sites. And so, I'm voting for a proposal in combination with the other, having passed the other as well, which does in fact meet the policy goals. And like was said by Councillor Reimer, that when we have these unique responses in particular situations, I think that staff should be empowered to look at these innovative types of opportunities. Again, it's perhaps not preferred, because I don't want to have a number, you know, it be the pattern where it's multiple sites that are achieving our priorities or policy situations, but in local context, in close proximity, you know, these things do come up, and I think that to have that flexibility to achieve important goals such as rental housing and for family housing, and revitalization of areas of our city like this one, that it is appropriate. And so, not to say, so I would strongly urge staff to continue to keep an open mind as we accept these types of applications and work with our development community to help build our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Louis, and we're ready to go to the vote on item number And all votes are in, 10 in favour, zero opposed, so it's unanimous support for item number four, so that combination of projects is approved. Thanks again to the applicants for bringing it forward, and staff for all the work on it and the innovation in this case. So, we have concluded our four items, thanks to everyone who was here and tuned in online to this public hearing. We need a motion to adjourn, and a second or for that. Moved and seconded, all is in favour of adjournment. Any opposed, that carries, so we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.